Okay, we're going to call the order. Call the meeting order at seven o'clock. We're gonna have a couple of opening comments, just general things right now. First of all, in case anybody needs them, restrooms are just on the hall on both sides. This meeting is to introduce, discuss, and vote on the resolutions. There will be four of them regarding the solar ordinances. Please, if you want to make any comments, I know we've got a list started that people will want to talk, please direct all your comments to me and not to the council. Keep your comments to the subject at hand. This is only for these four ordinances that we're talking about now. So any other business that you may have, I invite you to go to the township board meeting tomorrow night or the planning commission meeting next Tuesday night. And Ron, correct, if I'm wrong, but tomorrow's night's meeting is here.
Here.
Okay? Same time. Comments will be kept to the limit of three minutes. In two and a half minutes, Patty will raise her hand to indicate. You've got 30 seconds to complete your comments. Your time, should you not want it or not use all of it, cannot be transferred to another Last but not least, please be respectful of everybody's opinions. Everybody's, this could be a little contrary to some people, but please respect everybody. Thank you. Do you want to do a roll call, please?
Bob Hagan.
Here.
Don Klein.
Here.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Marissa McGlue.
Here.
Patty Sargent.
Here.
Steve Niscoda.
Here.
Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? Any issues? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda then?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is approved as written. Next, I'd like to thank Superintendent Johnson of the NBC School to give us the ability to meet here tonight, because obviously this would not have been in the township hall. Again, as I said, the public comments are to be kept for three minutes and specifically for these four ordinances. So we're going to open up the public hearing to introduce the zoning ordinances.
I'll make a motion to open up and to discuss ordinance number 60-2024 Renewable Energy Overlay. I'll second.
Motion for renewable, renewable, renewable energy overlay 60-2024. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Good point.
I'll move that.
It's nice to have something over your shoulder. Is there any public comments regarding what we've set up to this point?
Okay.
Now we can start again?
All right. I will again make a motion to review and discuss ordinance number 60-2024 Renewable Energy Overlay. I will second.
You mean to open the public hearing, right?
Yeah, yeah. And this will begin the public hearing on these. Does anybody have any comments on renewable energy overlay? In case, I don't know if anybody realized enough, but it was on the website, so anybody that was interested in seeing it could pull it up there.
People are confused. It's a time that people feel...
Yes, yes, yes. Anybody signed up? Now is the time to say something.
Are we going to go through the list? Are we just gonna call people?
This is not working.
I have the list here. Maybe for clarification, are people going to be allowed to discuss only the renewable energy overlay or is it just this one, right?
Okay, I beg your pardon. If you have a comment to do on the overlay, now is the time to say it. If you've got something on one of the other ones, I would just reserve your time for that. Does that make sense?
Would you like me to go through the list and when I call your name, if you have a comment, then you may go ahead. Okay. The first name, Chris Rogers?
I guess I'm leaning on I'm in support of this overlay. I think the chosen area in question is very smart for an option for placement for any renewable energy sources, as it's a brownfield, which is a great place to have something like this located. It's basically useless land as it sits now, so you know what, offer it up, make something of it. So I support in favor of this.
Anybody else have a comment?
Matt Fudgeens?
Aye, we are in support of these ordinances. Appreciate that, thank you.
Lori Coleman?
I'm gonna talk about the Renewable Ready Communities Program. Our state is awarding $130 million to municipalities throughout Michigan's townships like this for renewable ready. The program pays communities $5,000 per megawatt of wind, solar, or energy storage. According to Eagle, they've received already nine applications for this. White River Township could apply and receive up to $1 million if they work out a compromise on the Lakeside Solar Project. This would be money in addition to the tax benefits of 1.4 million annually from the Lakeside Solar Project. Imagine the impact on White River Township, Montague area public schools, and the White Lake community with this kind of funding. Why not consider this grant and a road to compromise, mending differences among families and neighbors? The ordinance overlay proposed tonight will delay the siting of renewable energy and cost the township unknown legal fees for years. It will also cost each of us individually. We have seen the impact of a warming climate with a severe thunderstorm damage this June in our community. It will only continue to get worse if we do not make the transition to renewables now. Thank you.
Tracy Dobson?
I am a lawyer, and I am very concerned about what I see as the lawyering aspects of the proposal. I see, we have recently spent $45,000 defending against the citizen petition to put the solar ordinance on the ballot. That's peanuts compared to what could be coming down the pike at us in lawsuits for all of this, for farmers suing the township, for developers suing the township, and this overlay district, as I understand it, is really something that is a bogus plan that can't be really used by developers and will generate more lawsuits. And I think that the, that the firm that's been hired by the township is an extremely high-priced firm, that's one of those $500 and $600 an hour firms, and we will be in for thousands and thousands of dollars in legal costs that will be on us, the townspeople, this White River Township citizens, if we don't watch out. So I think that we ought to look at this very, very carefully, because the potential there is for enormous legal costs that we will be confronting. And we already had to pay that one little bit, $45,000. And we know that the taxes coming in are shrinking, shrinking because of headland, so we do not need to incur additional costs. So let us step carefully as we look at the overlay district, and please, I'm concerned about the additional costs from legal fees. I think we could be stepping, really stepping into it, as they say. Could be really bad, so...
Don't people usually say where they're, where they live to? Are you here White River Township?
Of course, I think you have to be here, right? 6625 Law Road, Montague. And I'm right in the middle of all this. I'm on Pearson Creek, and I might add that I think putting this on the creek is going to destabilize the creek and create really big problems. We've also already got the creek in big trouble. That's it, that's me, I'm done.
I apologize, I didn't speak to everybody that was ready to speak, make sure you say your name, where you live.
If it's allowed, I could read the address that's written here? That's okay, then everyone can hear?
Yeah, I'll state their own.
State your own name and address. We have Keith Rantham?
Aye, Keith Rantham, 601 Hancock Road. I support the amendments, the proposed amendments for several reasons. First off, White River Township is a small township. We already have 1,400 acres of industrial wasteland. I don't think we need 1,700 more if we have an option for something else. The industrial land that we see here is owned by Kimores, and they've stated that they're interested in pursuing renewable development. Kimores also could use the substantial lease payments for potential cleanup, a win not only for the township but also for Kimores. Putting renewable systems on Kimores land places the system closest to an already existing substation, which is down just off of Lesmas Road. It's already there and in place. The amendments, as they're presented, comply with the state's PA 233 that requires brownfields and industrial lands be used before ag land from all applicants. And finally, I did a little, I did a little research on my own, because we always hear, well, if we go into forest land, we're deforesting land and we're taking away a carbon sink. So according to the U.S. Forestry Service, a mature oak tree will suck out 48 pounds of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere in a season. If you have an acre of trees and have 100 trees on that acre, which is a very thick forest, you're going to absorb 4,800 pounds of carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. You go to the Extension Service, Michigan State Extension Service, and they had an article, and it was titled, just so you know, "Cornfields Help Clean Up and Protect the Environment." I'd like to read just a portion of that for you, please. How much carbon dioxide does an acre of Michigan corn absorb in a growing season? That question is often asked, and the answer may surprise many people. Our calculations show the number to be in excess of 36,000 pounds of carbon dioxide per acre, almost eight times the amount of 100 oak trees. So for those reasons, I am fully in support of the amendments. Thank you.
Definitely, I support exactly what he said. I looked up the same information. He just beat me to it. I very much support the proposed changes in laws that are working here. Thank you. Peter Sinclair?
Hello, I'm Peter Sinclair. I live in Midland. I'm a videographer and a proponent of clean energy. What we often hear in opposition to solar is people say they want to preserve the farmland. Often, it's people that have an acre or so of property, enjoy the rural atmosphere, but somehow forget that the foundation for everything they love in the area is the farmer. But the farmers are not looked upon as stewards of the land, as someone that has a life, a family, that wants to not just put food on the table, but set aside a little extra, send a kid to school maybe, and maybe when they get up in their 70s and beyond, slow down a little bit and think about passing their land on to the next generation. Instead, the farmers are often seen as a kind of a servant, a sharecropper, a groundskeeper, whose only job is to preserve an unchanging pastoral backdrop for someone else's lifestyle. For farmers, what they do is not a lifestyle, it is their life. They, along with their parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents, have sweat and toiled and bled on this land, and they don't want to give it up. But the price of corn hasn't changed much since the 70s. Meanwhile, the price of seed and fertilizer and fuel have gone up dramatically. You, you could be forcing them to make a choice, to sell the land that has been the fabric of their lives, and when they do, it'll go to a developer who will bring subdivisions, strip malls, gas stations, burger joints, noise, pollution, concrete, traffic, trash, and higher taxes. Just be clear to your community, if solar is turned down or made impossible, that this is what you are choosing, and above all, don't lie to yourselves. There is no universe where that farmland remains unchanged from what it has been for decades. There is a path with solar energy that diversifies farm incomes, preserves family farms, creates huge tax revenue for the community, enriches the soil, flushes clean the aquifers, multiplies the population of beneficial insects, bees, beetles, small mammals, and ground nesting birds, the wildlife that depend on them. We know this will happen because data and observations prove it. Again, make sure your citizens approach this with open eyes, not wishful thinking. Remember, we live in the real world where change is the only constant, but we can guide change with informed choices. I hope you'll choose wisely. Thank you for your work.
Bruce Fralich?
Hi, my name is Bruce Fralich. My residence is 5150 Brookwood Circle in the city of Montague, and I have family who own parts of land located at the western end of Island Road on the south side of that road. So we have an interest in the township and pay property taxes to you regarding that land. I'd like to borrow Claire Schlaff's words, because I don't know that she'll get through all of them, and so I'm gonna speak in the first person as if I'm Claire, and hope she'll pick it up wherever I leave off. I am a co-coordinator of the Kimores Environmental Impact Committee, known as CIC. Since 2018, our members have put thousands of hours into research, outreach, and advocacy for the cleanup and conservation of the contaminated Kimores former Dupont site. During the past two years, we have collectively put hundreds of hours into the evaluation and restoration of Sedoni Bayou, which has become stagnant and is full of weeds all year long. I am puzzled as to why CIC was not contacted when the Planning Commission was considering offering the Kimores property for a solar array. There are many reasons why this would not work, and I would be happy to spend time discussing this with you. For one thing, we would be offering them land that may not be available ever or for the foreseeable future. I urge you to vote no on any ordinance that would propose the Kimores property as a potential site for a solar array. It is my understanding from a local official who spoke with Kimores that there are less than 200 acres of relatively treeless land that might be available on that site. Within that acreage are multiple unlined landfills and spill areas that need to be cleaned up. Eagle, the Department of Energy, Great Lakes, and Environment, have just signed a consent order with Kimores on July 9 this year. After approximately five years of negotiations and nearly 30 years since the Dupont plant closed...
Three seconds.
I'll finish this paragraph and pass it to Claire for later. Kimores has not yet submitted their plans for the cleanup. Once they have done that, Eagle will need to approve those plans or send them back to Kimores for revisions. The cleanup itself could take years or even decades. Meanwhile, a solar project there would be on hold while our generation continues to rely on non-renewable energy resources.
Lauren Wackernagel, 10137 Old Highway 99, Montague. Thank you for taking comments today. I am speaking in support of the amendments proposed by White River Township, including the overlay district. I believe utility-scale solar belongs on brownfield land. Michigan State Law 233 says brownfield land should be explored as the first option for large-scale renewables. Also, there are state-funded grants available for renewable projects on brownfield land that our community would potentially have access to. 233 also says that prime farmland should be avoided if possible. Between the topsoil being taken away and decommissioning opportunities, chances are it would never be farmed again. I'd like to suggest to the Township Board and Planning Commission that the residential zone space owned by Kimores along the east side of Indian Bay be kept out of the overlay district out of respect for the space of the residents and their quality of life. Another consideration about utility-scale solar in general is deforestation. I love the woods in White River Township. I understand that most of the selected Kimores overlay is open land, it'd be scrub and automatic. I'm also aware that on the ag solar leased land, many of those woods would be cut down because those are leased. I spoke, seen the maps, and I've talked to Amber Miller from National Grid. In either scenario, whether it's an overlay district or not, we need to remember that Kimores has been actively deforesting their land for years. They will most likely continue to cut down the woods, and you can see what they've done from the air. A solar overlay would bring revenue to Kimores that hopefully will be used to clean their, to fund their cleanup. There's a long history of abuse of the land and the residents. As we know, they polluted the township, and it's time they clean it up. Perhaps this overlay area can finally provide healing and doing something good for the planet and the community as well. If they have ongoing lease revenue, I can envision them improving the community with a public park along the lake shore and a bike trail out to the channel. Funding the solar overlay may even promote protecting some of their woods. Also, I support keeping local control of our zoning ordinances, and having an overlay district will help keep our zoning local.
Three seconds.
It will provide an ordinance that is written locally and also adheres to the state rules, a compromise. I'd like to thank the Board and the committee for helping to protect our quality of life here in our special corner of the world.
Thank you. Jim Rose?
Jim Rose, North Old Channel Trail. CIC is a township authorized committee that advocates for restoration and conservation. You are being asked to approve deforestation in my, from my perspective, at least 700 of 900 acres. I too have looked at the U.S. Forest Service, looking at the sequestration of carbon dioxide. Represents greater than 2,400 tons of the 900 acres, assuming one oak tree per acre. That's an emission of over 500 cars. We have the opportunity to nullify the emission of 500 cars per year, just as the emission, just as the sequestration per year is 2,400 tons. Kimores property is contaminated, indeed restricted, with no restoration in sight. This consent order took five years. How long's it gonna take to deal with the actual itemization of the landfill's cleanup? They are responsible for cleaning up the property, not some funding that we are going to allot them. The future is with renewable energy and strategies to minimize and remove greenhouse gases that are responsible for the climate crisis. We must not participate in deforestation. We need to do our part for our children and our children's children. I urge the township to vote no on the overlay.
Nathan Nagelkirk?
I'm, I live at 8078 North Old Channel Trail, and I represent the people that live there and the four homes near ours. We actually live in the township, unlike many who would like to tell our township what to do. In regard to the deforestation, we're looking at ruining 1,700 acres of farmland and scenic, tourist land. So it's kind of hard for me to hear people worried about cutting down trees that regrow. So during the supervisor recall election, I spoke with many residents in White River Township. I don't know how many, but it was a lot. And over and over again, I heard the same question. Why don't they put the industrial solar array on Kimores property? So I represent them as well. Hundreds of residents of White River Township who couldn't make it tonight would be very happy with these ordinances if they had to choose between two evils. And so my, my question is, with all the unknown negative effects that these solar panels might have on the environment, wouldn't it make a lot more sense to put them on land that has already been ruined by a corporate experiment? We only get one chance at this. If we are going to rush into industrial solar in our township, then I support these ordinances. Sorry that I'm a little nervous, I've been kind of sick, so, thanks.
Jim Langland?
Tim Langland in New York Road. My comments are going to be a little more specific, I think. On the overlay section, they talk about three parcels in particular. I wasn't able to look up those particular parcels in, to be specific, I was wondering if it included the waterfront. I didn't know if you were gonna show a map that talked about that. On the solar ordinance specifically, I noticed that on the height, they're talking about a maximum height of 25 feet, that's above ground when full tilt. I'm wondering why it needs to be that high. I can understand if it's on a structure, or I think the other solar that was, solar ordinance that was, talked about was 12 feet in height. My main concern is, overall, I'm, I agree with a lot of people that say, okay, it's brownfield land, we should be able to use it for renewable energy purposes, and each one of these ordinances talks about the township will receive $2,000 per megawatt of nameplate capacity for the purposes of police, fire, public safety, etc. $2,000 over the megawatt under...
Overlay right now. So don't go any further than that, because we're going to handle each one of those individually.
Rose Rowan.
Hi, Ms. Rose Rowan. I live at 7039 East Road. I've been here 70 years, and I, I support the ordinance. Um, overlays. I support 100% Comores. I've lived here, like I said, and I live down the road from Comores. And it is already land that you can't do anything on, you cannot farm on or anything. I would recommend that, and I stand behind you, and thank you.
Amy Wilkinson.
Hi, Amy Wilkinson, 11038 Old Highway 99. I am very much in favor of the overlay, the ordinance. I believe that solar energy is, at this level, is an industrial overlay that should be in an industrial, commercial area. And I think that it would ruin the beauty and the livelihoods of many people, not just in the next couple of years, but forever. You can't just strip the topsoil away and say, oh, well, in 20 years, this will all be put back like that. It should stay in the industrial area because that's what it is. Thank you.
John Wilkinson.
I'm John Wilkinson. I live at 11038 Old Highway 99. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. I'm not going to reiterate what's been said. I think there's a lot of good logic and common sense behind using essentially wasteland versus converting prime agricultural land into industrial land. Thank you.
Marsha Ramey.
I'll pass it this time.
Mary Jo Ernst. Yes, thank you. I got to do that one.
I'm Mary Jo Ernst. I live at 7044 Old Channel Trail. I'm a resident of White River Township. I support the overlay. This is about progress, negotiation, and compromise. Let's pause for a moment and marvel where we are at today by looking back to a PAC Town Hall meeting in February 2023, when 90 residents stood up in visual support of a moratorium wearing blue t-shirts stating, "No industrial solar in White River Township." Fast forward to the new ordinance, a year later, that is not exclusionary and in fact allows 500 acres of large-scale renewables, 300 more acres than what is needed for local energy needs. We are past the no solar in White River Township stance. This is what everyone in this room should understand. This is what compromise looks like. We have compromised, and we need to recognize that fact, all of us here, regardless of what side you are on. The bottom line is that when the state's citing takes over effect in November, we, no one can predict the path that we will take our township in. One of the first requirements listed in the new law is that brownfields and industrials should be used first before farmland. We have both, and it should be considered in compliance with the new law. Everyone knows that dealing with a complex issue, it's better to have a seat at the table. With the impending new law, we no longer have zoning control over large renewables. Comores could easily put themselves up to the highest bidder, ending with clearcutting as much forest as they are able. They have been actively longing already for 10 years. If people here tonight are that concerned about potential deforestation with this overlay, then perhaps they should discuss the history of the complete, the completed deforestation that is already taken care of throughout with Comores. The alternate of putting large solar on farmland will entail a fair amount of tree removal as where? Well, where is the outrage over that? With or without North National Grid? And by the way, there is no proposal right now in front of the township. We do not know who's coming for us in the fall. What most are not grasping is that solar could and probably will happen on Comores land, with or without the township's involvement, because this is our reality. I live in the real world, and we need to be proactive. That is what a planning commission does. These amendments show intent. If the state follows the new law, then the Comores land would be followed anyway. I just have one request. For everybody who supports the overlays, please stand up, even if you have talked. Thank you.
Just because you remain seated doesn't mean that you.
Yes, Skopna. Hi, I'm Irene Skopna. I live at 7044 West Old Channel Trail, and I'm here to support these amendments as a way to combat climate change instead of destroying our local community, especially our local farmers, provide towards our food source. We appreciate your time listening, and I hope that you all vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Connie Kranser.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all because I think you guys are mighty and you are brave to be here. Connie Kranser, I'm in Montague Township, 5955 Islers Road. When I heard that Comores was going to be possibly deforested, that's the word that's being used today, a group of us actually walked the property. So it's erroneous to think that the whole acreage there is brown land or brown field, and it is compromised. In fact, the 300 acres to the north, those are two parcels, is a very good-quality forest, has diversity, it supports wildlife, it provides ecosystem services for each and every one of us. Also, okay, so that's the northern. Also, here on this side of the lime pile is another high-quality forest, much like the northern one. In the middle, where the plant was, it is compromised. It is opened, there is not very healthy forest, very close, has invasive species, it has a stand of Scott's pine. So I am proposing a middle approach. It's not one or the other. It is, let's use what is compromised already, which is the middle 300 acres plus this, but you got it in purple, so maybe that's out of the question, and leave the high-quality acres in the north and in the south that not only provides ecosystem services for birds and wildlife, pollinators, and natural, or native, what am I trying to say? Beneficial, other beneficial insects, but also think about the fact that if you destroy that first, forest, that is on contaminated soil and water. What are you doing to the groundwater? That groundwater has to flow somewhere. It is being interrupted by roots, roots that are there. So keep some of the forest and then use the middle part that's already been compromised. And if you still need to have more acres, take that to the farmland. So it's like summon the Comores and summon the farmland. And I also want to say that not only will it help with bioremediation for the contaminated soil and the water, but it will also, okay, offer carbon sequestration. Thank you very much.
Is, I think, I think this is crossed out. B. Deegan, is it crossed out?
It's crossed out.
Crossed out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Claire Schlaff.
Claire Schlaff, 7187 North Old Channel Trail. Thank you, Bruce, for reading the first part of my statement. I want to reiterate again that when Sathia Yelvigy was asked, the Comores management guy, how much property is unforested and could be available, he said 200 acres. So that's what we're talking about, 200 acres. And some of that 200 acres had, quote, "scrub trees" on it that would need to be cut down to make room for solar. Regardless of the type of tree, their roots are necessary for holding the soil in place, preventing erosion and filtering groundwater, whether it contains nutrients from farmfields or golf courses or contaminants from chemical manufacturing. Our best hope to preserve the farmland in White River Township would be to keep it in the hands of our local farmers, trusting them to make decisions about their own property. I would hope that they would decide to lease their land for solar rather than sell it to a developer who would likely turn it into a suburban sprawl. A solar array on a farm field not only provides urgently-needed renewable energy, but it also allows organic matter to build up, farming, recharging the soil to provide excellent farming land 30 years from now. And someone mentioned premier farmland. I've been told that the farmland is not, it's not quality farmland. There are only six inches of topsoil. The, allowing the, the land to recharge itself would allow the planned restoration of Sedony Bayou to move, remove, to move forward as well, with confidence that the restored bayou would not be impacted by runoff containing chemical fertilizers. We must be thinking about future generations when making decisions today. The kind of world they will be living in depends on us. And as we said, the Comores cleanup could take years or decades, so we would be just holding, waiting for them. I would be proud to see solar panels in our community, and I would be proud to show it off to my grandsons, who in turn would be relieved that our generation is doing something to try to avert our climate crisis. A solar array on open land in White River Township should be a source of pride for our community. Please vote no on this ordinance, or at least postpone your vote until you have had time to study the unintended consequences of your decision. Thank you.
Paul Schrader.
Yeah, Paul Schrader, 10261 Chase Road, Montague, Michigan. I sit here and listen to all this stuff. The first thing that comes to my mind, any idea how long it's going to take DuPont to do any of this? Any idea? It won't get done. That's why they want this overlay. So I could go on for a long time, but I'm not gonna. I think the overlay is about as worthless as something else, but I won't use that. I, I did address you once, didn't I? And one thing that came out of him about this was, we don't want to see farmers make any money. Came right out of his mouth.
Chelsea Bender.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Bender. I live at 9633 Old Highway 99. I teach at Montague High School. In this past year, also taught here at Nellie Beach Chisholm. Two years ago, I have the shirt on. A student made me this shirt. It was for the, we did a project focused on Comores and the DuPont property and the idea of the cleanup. And a lot of my students had no idea that that property was ever there. They had no idea that it existed. And when we walked it, the first things, because I, most of you guys remember, two years ago, right when that was happening, when we did that project, was right when this was all going on. And I have a reminder for me, because we have four kids and one is 10 months old now, so I was pregnant when this was all going on. And the big question my students continued to ask, because our school was abuzz with the whole thing of going on with solar, was, okay, this is out here, why aren't we putting solar on it? And I understand that there's, there's a lot of hoops to jump through in order for solar to happen. But I am for the overlay, especially that middle portion where the plant used to sit. If it's 200 acres, it's 200 acres of great solar. And whether that means that later on, we could have solar in other areas as well, but that is land that is not useful for other things. Also, what, what tears me apart personally is the idea of, if we did have 1,600 acres, not a small amount, but 1,600 acres of farmland, that later on, we had to deal with the same thing, where 60 years later, people were talking about, how do we clean something up? Maybe that won't be the case. But if we could have a compromise where some of this is solar, and then maybe we are able to have other solar as well, but small portions, I think that that would be a good thing for future generations, for both cleanup and for clean energy. Thank you.
Mike McCoy. Beth Sanders, are you passing? Yes, thank you. Sam Bender.
Sam Bender will be here in a few minutes.
Oh, hi. I live at 6690 Lakefront Drive. I'm in the township. You know, I really don't know how I feel about this, so I'm not going to say, I urge you to do one thing or the other, but I have a couple of thoughts as people are talking. Number one, about the deforestation. We are entrusting that this corporation is not going to log this property. I've lived here long enough that I've seen them log large swaths of it, clear cut. It's the responsibility of a corporation to maximize shareholder value. So to trust that that forest is going to be pristine for the next 20 or 30 years is a fool's game. We don't have control over that. So just so you all know, we don't have control over what Comores does with their own land. Number two, as I look at climate change, I look 30 years into the future, and I wonder what the state of farming is going to be in this country. Right now, California, Arizona, New Mexico, Oregon, in Washington State, they can't farm because of climate change. Michigan is going to be in a great position to be the breadbasket in another 30 years. So I'm not even looking today, I'm looking what's going to happen in 30 years. So I'm urging you all to think very carefully about this, and I know you are. I don't like the idea of cutting down trees. I am a tree lover, but I think that there is a trade-off here. And that, and the job that you unfortunately have to do is how to weigh these trade-offs to not only see what's best today for the residents, but to see what's going to be best in another 30 years. And I thank you for taking this on and doing the really hard work.
Sam Bender.
So, Sam Bender, I live on Old Highway 99. I was taking a look at our current zoning districts, as you guys have probably already covered. We have ag, residential, waterfront, residential, manufactured home parks, commercial, light industrial, commercial, industrial, and planned use development. And it looks like there are a couple other ones, a public recreation conservatory. Anyways, out of, out of these areas, when I think about a solar energy system, I think about metal racks, glass panels, wires, cables, fences, et cetera. And those things sound like they fit in with an industrial area to me, like that would fit well in an industrial district. So it seems fitting to me to locate solar energy systems in an area that's zoned industrial. Besides being fitting from a zoning standpoint, there are other benefits to converting a brown field to a bright field. One thing that I think about is lifespan of a solar energy system being on the order of 25 to 30 years. And in that time, advancements can be made to, in the field of environmental remediation, at which time they could clean up the rest of the site in a cost-effective manner. There's land use optimization, being able to use an otherwise vacant site for productive uses, infrastructure advantages like roads, transmissions, fences, that all lower the costs. And of course, there are financial incentives, like the Inflation Reduction Act allows for funds to be put towards solar on brownfields. So to me, this seems like a very reasonable and intuitive approach. Thank you.
Mike Fargo?
Hi there, Mike Fargo, 10304 Os Valley. And I want to really encourage you to vote in favor of the overlay. I want to thank you for your time and talent in putting this all together. The use of brownfield site, especially to, to generate solar energy, seems like such a win-win for me. Brownfields are, are industrial wastelands, and this allows us the opportunity to, to repurpose some of that for a constructive use. I'm sorry, I touched your head there. And I just want to thank you sincerely for, for giving this consideration.
Liz Hedges?
Hi, my name is Liz Hedges. I live at 10076 Old Highway, Old Highway 99 in the township. I want to thank you so much for all your hard work with this, endless hours, lots of consideration, and it's not lost on us. And I support the overlay and the amendments, and I really thank you for all your hard work.
Nancy Hughes. I live at 7045 North Old Channel Trail. And I, I agree with a lot of points that a lot of people have made, but I just wanted to point out respectfully that corn is a carbon sink maybe for the period of time where it's growing, but it's not always there, like an oak tree is always there year-round kind of thing. So a forest is more culpable for climate change in some ways than, than corn. But I support having a limited solar array on the brownfields that are already in Kamor's without taking too many, without taking the healthy forest down. And also, make the compromise in letting the farmers have some smaller solar arrays if they need to. Because, let's face it, they're getting older, and maybe if, if Michigan is going to be, because we have water, a breadbasket in the future, it might be neat, nice to have the farm fields, farmland, be made farmland with some sort of financial support. So compromise, that's mine. Mine.
John Coe?
Yes. I, I'm her husband, and I live at 7045 North Old Channel. I agree with the idea of the overlay, but I think that there should also be an option for allowing farmers to, if they want to generate extra income by having a solar array available. Thank you.
Deb Hopkinsson?
Hi, I'm Deborah Hopkinsson. I live at 8713 Lehman Road, and I also have a small parcel of active farmland a little further north on Lehman. I'm just here to voice my support for the renewable energy overlay, which actually empowers White River Township to decide the size and scope of renewable energy projects in our community. Last year, the voters of White River Township spoke loud and clear, we don't want our agricultural land decimated by industrial renewable energy installations. And in response, you passed an ordinance that reflects the wishes of the township, an ordinance allowing for 500 acres or 5% of township land. Thank you for that. The proposed overlay doesn't change that ordinance at all. It just shifts or guides the industrial installations away from the vulnerable shoreline and critical dunes with their thousands of rare and endangered plants and animals. It shifts it away from the recently renewed Pearson Creek wetland, away from the agricultural land that will never recover from decades of industrial misuse, and away from the 89 families whose homes border on the previously proposed installation. Citing RE installations on Kamor's land, RE renewable energy, with a wide perimeter protecting the neighboring families from its effects is paramount, obviously. And you've assured us that this will be the case. And in addition, if 200 acres of nearly empty Kamor's land are used for industrial RE, there's another 1,000 acres of heavily forested land to provide screening, erosion prevention, groundwater filtering, animal habitat, and of course, the carbon sink. Contrast that with the fact that every stand of trees on the ag land previously proposed would be completely clear cut. There would be no shelter for animals in a six-square-mile area. There would be zero protection for Pearson Creek, or the 89 families from the flooding and runoff that's been experienced at the Montague Array. Michigan's new energy law directs that industrial land and brownfields must be used before ag land. The Nature Conservancy, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and the EPA agree with this approach and are working together to turn brownfields to that use. TNC's 2024 report, Mining the Sun, identifies 20 million acres of brownfield land to be redeveloped for renewable energy. Using this previously blighted land would create enough electricity to power, get this, 200 million US homes. And being zoned industrial, it speeds the process, streamlining construction. The report states that most brownfields contain large open areas, electrical transmission access, roads ingrained land. The Kamor's overlay contains all of these features, including the substation that brought developers here in the first place. Right now, there's only a fraction of potential brownfield sites in development, but tests and incentives provided by the Inflation Reduction Act are encouraging more development, and it's very likely that Kamor's is now or soon will be pursuing RE leases with developers. Why not let us be a voice at the table and join the environmental groups I previously mentioned to be a pioneer in that brownfield space? This land has haunted our community for 70 years, and they have finally agreed to continue the cleanup. And I just think that it would be great, instead of letting it be a source of anger and grief for our community, that the land finally gives back to us, and this time will get a say in how it's used. Thank you, and so sorry to be going over.
Bill Bookquist?
Bill Bookquist, 7236 Minor Road. I just want to say I support the overlay and thank the board for what they've done. Everyone else has covered all the other points I would have made. Thanks.
Bill Deneut?
Yeah, Bill Deneut, 7675 North Old Channel Trail. So I just want to first off, thank you for all the work that you've done, and thank all the people that are here that have made the signs, carried the clipboards around, and tried to educate us all on this policy. We support the overlay, we support the amendment. My only, my only thing about this, and it always has been about this, is the zoning. Now, I'm not against the farmers making money, you know, be that far from me to say that. I like solar. If I could put solar on our house, to have the geothermal system run on it, wonderful. But to have a facility of this size and nature, this is an industrial facility in a rural area, and I haven't seen or heard one person, including the National Grid Solar, who has stepped up and offered to pay these people fair market value, whose properties are adjacent to this. You know, I mean, for all of us that want to talk about climate change and carbon sequestration and all this stuff, where have you been? And why don't you offer to help buy some of these people out of their properties? I mean, who would want to have solar on two or three sides, four sides of your home? I mean, come on, folks. You know, I, I'm, I'm all in one, try it all. But to do this, I'm sorry, Deb, you do a wonderful job, thank you. And everybody else that has supported this, this thing, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Those are last names. Turn it back over to Dan.
Okay, we'll close the public comments on the energy overlay. We'll now take comments on the solar energy systems.
I'll make a motion to open public comment on ordinance number 61-2024 Utility Scale Solar Energy Systems. I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Without going through all those names again, can we just have anybody that wants to talk about the solar array? Stand up and say your name. Do we have questions regarding the solar array?
I make a motion to close public comment.
Could you clarify what you're asking, and be, what is the utility scale solar energy systems that you would like us to speak about?
Well, I hope everybody had an opportunity to access the website to be able to read the ordinance, so that they could come here and ask questions. That's what we wanted, wanted to do. No, no, no problem, no problem.
I guess I have a question, going back to the agenda. The way the agenda was written out, you said you were going to open public hearing, and you were going to introduce four zoning ordinances and then have public comment. Is it your intent that you're changing the agenda to introduce each one of those at each one time, and then having the public comment on each one individually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Connie Krancer?
Yeah. Is this about the array itself and the heights and all that? Yes. So my, my only suggestion or comment is that you might want to look at the height, so that grazing could actually happen with animals underneath it, and that would give double purpose if it was on agricultural land, not the Kamor's, but if it went to agricultural land, you could have double purpose.
The height that you suggested, this is a reference, rooftop solar? The 25 feet? No? Okay. I'm Ted Franklin, I live at 7285 West Anderson Road, and I've only been here for 74 years. Thank you.
Tim Balk, Old Highway 99, 10521. I hear acreage for solar, but I wonder how many megawatts does that represent? My question is, the field that we have right now on Old Highway 99, or US, US 31, that solar field was supposed to produce 35 megawatts. In reality, that field only produces 6 megawatts. So what, what is this field supposed to produce? And can we hold them to that? And if not, why do we put it in? Just a question.
I'll make a motion to close public comment on ordinance number 61-2024 Utility Scale Solar Energy Systems.
Steve second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's passed.
I will go ahead and make another motion to discuss and consider ordinance number 62-2024 Wind Energy Systems.
Is there any comments? Any comments regarding windmills, wind energy systems?
Tim 916344, 801 Road. And the sake of repeating some of what I was trying to cover earlier, which I didn't realize that we were just doing one at a time, we just talked about the overlay, and we're talking about renewable energy. I heard a lot of comments on solar, but I really am concerned about wind turbines. Like I said, the tallest wind turbine in the world is 919 feet high. As I look over and I see trees in that Kamor's area today, I see clouds in the sky above those trees. Those trees are probably 150 feet tall. A tower of 900 feet would really stick out there. And I find it interesting that for the single WEX system, there's a limitation on the heights of an 80-foot tower and 100-feet blade, which would in essence put it at 130 feet. I think one of the earlier sections of the commercial has a limit of 400 feet, but it's like, I don't know if that's going to be overruled with this new law or not. And again, I, I am concerned about the decibels. Wind, wind power happens whenever the wind blows, so there's no control of when those blades are going to be happening or not. And so if it has been that suggested that an average exposure of 30 to 43 decibels can cause humanly harm to their health, so having an average of 55 is, is a little bit concerning. Thank you.
David votes 7710 Lakefront in the township. I like wind injury, energy, except for the systems that are doing it right now. There are some new developments coming out that are basically horizontal rather than vertical, and they are much more efficient once installed and operating. They have, I, I've worked with a couple of people from the wind tunnel industry, and they've shown this data, but it's not taken root, because for some reason or other, people like these big crazy towers, and there's a lot better way to do it. So, you know, okay, I'm sort of against this one.
I'll make a motion to close public comment on ordinance number 62-2024 Wind Energy Systems.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That's passed.
Can I make another motion, please? I would like to make a motion to open up for discussion, ordinance number 63-2024 Utility Scale Battery Energy Storage Systems.
Second.
Sure.
I don't know what these things look like. How big are they?
I'm personally not very familiar with them, but they're not as high as windmills, to put it that way.
Are they big structures? They big industrial structures?
No.
Small old things?
No, no.
The size of a railcar. The size of a railcar.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, I'm, I'm just thinking, industrial equals industrial, so it feels like the citing of this is also on the industrial land that's already been devoted towards industrial. So that's my comment, without knowing what these things look like.
Anybody else?
Can I make another motion? How about we close the public hearing and comments and discussion on ordinance number 63-2024 Utility Scale Battery Energy Storage Systems?
All those in favor?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that will conclude the public hearings, and now we will discuss.
I thought we just basically covered all that. Do you want to do it again? Well, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. We've got an opportunity to do another three-minute discussion on basically anything you want to talk about regarding these four ordinances. Anything that people might have said that jarred your memory about something, you want to talk about it.
Irene Skopna, 7044 West Old Channel Trail. I just want to say that Dupont is honestly the perfect area that these solar panels should be placed at, just because I've noticed in that area that wildlife is not the same that it used to be. The water that used to be there is now completely dried up, almost. And it's a wasteland. So that's all I wanted to give you to. Thank you.
10680, Highway 99, Montague. I just want to thank the board for all the time and effort they've put into this, and looking out for the township, the residents of the township. I want to say I support your overlay ordinance, and thank you for all that you've done.
Could I have your name again?
Angela Hughes.
Andrea Hughes?
Angelo, Angelo. Angelo Hughes. Thank you.
Roger Simon, 10580 Williams. Doesn't your agenda call for a vote on those next?
No, actually, we will be voting on the resolutions, which we will be doing now.
That's what I'm talking about. You closed the public hearing, right?
No, we're not open.
It's open again?
No, the public hearings are closed.
We're just having public comments. Nine. We're on nine.
Okay.
My name is Dolores DiMaro. I live at 8069 Indian Bay Road. Been there since 1980. Started building our new home. And lived there in my house in '81. Our water is 100% perfect. Dupont's right across from my property. All those years, my dad worked there for many, many years, over 30 years. As you know, it's my boy, so I'm nervous. Anyway, I don't believe Dupont property is as contaminated as everybody thinks it is. They never made bad chemicals. It was melping. And sure, there was some waste out at the ends of the water pumps where they were pumping it out. But the land all around us and the people who live around there have not had contaminated water as Hooker had, people. Or they had to have bottled water brought into their home. We have never had that. So solar panels, I'm not for that. But to save the woods in front of me, all the way where it's open, I agree with the proposal that the township put forward for this, on the open land part. But let's save our trees. We need it for the animals. They need a place to live. I have a lot of deer. I have a lot of stuff around my house, turkeys, everything. So we need to save this, and oxygen, which produces from the trees. Thank you.
Could I get your name again, please?
Dolores DiMaro.
BioRit, 7523 North Old Channel Trail. I just have a few things to say. Possibly creating this overlay district will help. I'm part of the Comores Environmental Cleanup Committee. Possibly this will help speed up the cleanup. As Paul suggested, not in our lifetime, but maybe if they agree to the solar panels. I'm looking at a list of areas of concern that the vacant land that you're looking at covers, I don't know how many of these dump sites. And what we have been trying to get Comores to do is to dig out those landfills, so that they're no longer polluting the groundwater. Nobody's agreed to that. Right now, this list of their solutions would be to put a dig-deed restriction over those and leave the material where it is. Some of these landfills are 20, 30 feet deep. So if there's a dig-deed restriction on it, you can't put in a solar panel without digging for the post holes, I'm guessing. So if there's a dig-deed restriction on it, that reduces the amount of property that you can use for the solar panels. So maybe if Comores agrees to this, it could help us. If they have to dig those landfills out, that would be nice. So see what you can do. Go for it.
Chris Rogers, 9515 Leamell Road, Montague. Listening to all the comments, and I did go first and supported, I absolutely support, because I don't know if everybody realizes, in November, everything we work for, the state is taking control of this placement of all these things. What we're trying to do right now is protect by saying, here's what we have, here's what we have offered to these companies to come into our areas and do this. All these trees, great. Does the state give a crap about the trees? Who knows? We don't know what's going to happen. So if we pass this, we are giving them an offering of, hey, we have a brownfield, we've offered it. They might not care about any of our ordinances. Just want to throw that out there, you know. Yes, because it will protect us as much as we can anymore. If people didn't sign to try to get this back in our hands to vote in November, this is the best we can do right now. So appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Peter Sinclair, again, and I come to, I'm hearing a great deal of denial. And a great deal of just what I discussed is that people seem very content to completely ignore the economic position that farmers are in. Over and over again, we hear people say, let's not put solar on farmland, let's keep that farmland. That's not the choice. The way to preserve the farmland is to keep the farmer in business, keep the farm in the family, and thereby keep that land in good condition. In fact, improve the condition of that land over the lifetime of the solar field. And then, if indeed, in 30 years, that is desperately needed for food production, it will not only be available still, it will be improved. But if we allow the farmers to just, we assume that they're just going to eat by losing money year after year after year as they get older, that's in denial to the point of delusional. And it's not going to happen. They're going to sell the land, it's going to be developed, and it will be turned into sprawl. So we need to look at what the actual choices are here. Preserving farmland means putting solar, or allowing those farmers to make choices on their private property to diversify their income, so they can stay in business and preserve that land as family farm. All of these other ideas make this assumption that farmers are just going to go on losing money or barely making it forever. And it's unrealistic, and people need to wake up to what their real options are. Thank you.
Deborah, this is 8710 Lakefront, White River Township. I just wanted to thank you as a planning commission and a board for understanding that this renewable energy ordinance and overlay are not about keeping eight farmers in business, it's about keeping our entire community safe. It's about protecting the investments that we have made in our homes, in our property, in our own farmland, to keep this community the vibrant, loving, and close community that we are. It's not about keeping eight farmers in business. And if people have a business that they are unable to keep viable, then they need to often sell that business. And I lease my farmland to a farmer who is desperately seeking farmland in the community. He doesn't own land, but he leases land from people, and he can't get enough land to lease to be able to support his family, because the farmers want to keep their land for solar leases and renewable energy leases. Instead of it being productive farmland, they would rather let it lie fallow. So if they aren't making money as farmers, it's because they are letting it lie fallow. And I so appreciate your protection of the entire community and your wisdom in knowing what your role is here, which is not to protect eight people, but to do what's best for a community of 1,200 people. Thank you so very much.
I think we have another person here. Peter?
This is 12076, Old Highway 99. She pretty much said it all. I just wanted to say that if we're going to talk about the economic impact, let's be fair to all the residents here. And so farmers aren't the only ones eking by with high interest rates, high home values. Our taxes are higher now, too. Also, what about our property values? And I feel as though you guys worked really, really hard to create a solution and a compromise that really goes for the majority of the people here, not the minority. And that's here in the overlay in the proposals. Thank you.
David votes again, 6710 Lakefront. You know, developers going to take that property? Maybe, but not very likely. You know, we've got beautiful scenery here, stuff that looks good. That's not the choice, really. The choice is keeping it as farmland. I don't believe his result that the farmland's going to be better after 30 years. Look at what happened at Montague. Half the soil went rolling down the hill. You know, it's a mess. They had to level all kinds of things. They took the topsoil off. That is what would happen. We don't need that to happen.
7653 Indian Bay Road. I'd like to thank you for all your work that you guys have done. The only comment I have is for the people who are outside of the township, who are in support or not in support of the overlay. I don't think they should have any skin in the game. It's a not-in-my-backyard issue. It's not impacting them at all. So as far as I'm concerned, their comments don't mean a thing to me. Thank you.
I lived in White River Township for 70, 40 years. They are ranked, I want to live on, 7285 Anderson Road. I fit pickles in the farmland that is the golf course now. It used to be farmland. Okay, that disappeared. We want solar to disappear the rest of our farmland, what are we going to eat? Solar panels, one of the things that I worry about is, the solar panels generate heat. It's like putting a big parking lot out in your field. Researched it, it generates 33 degrees above what the temperature is. So if it's 70 out there, the panels are 113 degrees. It's like a big black parking lot. My uncle did this when he used a black piece of plot, laid it in the snow, watched it disappear in the sun. So the solar panels are going to generate heat. Global warming. The solar generators are going to generate heat. I live just down the road from Dupont. I know what the lady's talking about, by the 30-foot-deep dumps that they had in there. As a kid, we went and looked at them. We seen the stuff that was going on over there. Because that's our little playground as a young child. And solar's not a good idea. My idea of solar is, is I go to work, I drive underneath the solar panels, I plug my electric car in, I work my eight hours, I come back out, unplug my electric car, and I drive home. Farmland, when it's gone, it's gone. You can't eat. It's not a good trait. This, I'm not really happy about the whole situation of generating that kind of heat in my neighborhood. But someone made a comment about the windmills. I've walked past windmills up by Mackinaw. And if you live anywhere close to a highway or road, it's the same sound you hear. Matter of fact, I believe the windmills are a little bit less noisy than the cars going up and down your road. So yeah, give me a windmill any day, I can plant and grow stuff underneath the windmill. You can't under solar. Solar is dead ground for the next 30 years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I want to address the fact that we were supposed to be respectful at this meeting, and we've been called delusional a number of times by somebody that does not live here. I happen to know quite a bit about soil health. I agree that the solar panel situation over there behind Master Tag, you can look and see the soil yourself. It's washed down the hill, it's roded, there aren't pollinators and beautiful wildflowers. It's desolate. Soil health is built by organic matters, by living organisms feeding that. That's what happens when we farm. That's what happens in the forest. That is not what happens under glass, okay? You aren't building soil. You aren't creating anything. If anything, you're ruining it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill, Melco Kurt, Vito's 8078 Old Channel, West or North Old Channel Trail, across from the golf course. I've been following this a little bit from afar. We own the property, we do not live there. My son and daughter-in-law live there, and I live in Grand Rapids. So I've been following this for quite some time. And what amazes me is that the 80 or 90 property owners who are going to be living in this mess, as I call it, sorry for the language, they're hardly considered. If nothing else, if the farmers can't make it, let's put in 10-acre plots where you have a beautiful home with beautiful flowers and vegetation. I mean, there's nice places in the farm area. Let's not ruin their beauty right now with these things that we don't know eventually what the results are going to be. Let's care about these 80 or 90 property owners that aren't invested. I've lost money in an investment that went bad. I know what losing money is all about, and I feel for the farmers. I do. But there's other alternatives. Let's not forget the 80 or 90 property owners that are going to be, I'm across from the golf course. It's gorgeous. It's the most beautiful place on earth, as far as I'm concerned. So let's not ruin it for these 80 or 90, please.
Anyone else?
One more question.
Yes.
I was told we don't get energy to support our homes for electricity if these solar panels come in, like the farmers want, everyone, okay? We don't get that energy to our house. It goes someplace else in banks, all right? What happens when it gets dark? I was told after it gets dark, if we did have solar energy at my home, okay? And we don't have Great Lakes energy anymore, if I live that long, who's going to buy me a Genex for my house so I can have heat in the middle of the winter? so I can have heat in the middle of the winter at fifteen or zero-degree weather where you don't have no heat in your house? Because you need electricity to make my propane work, okay, my furnace? But we don't have electricity anymore, it's running on solar panels. But it doesn't generate after it gets dark because there's no sun. And I told, was told after so many hours, it goes dead, like for five hours or so. So what happens to us when we don't have no power and we're in the middle of the winter? How are we going to keep our butts warm? That's all I want to know, I don't know much about. Can you guys give me an answer? Who's buying a Gen X? Are you guys buying solid Gen X for our houses? That's a good question, isn't it? Does he have another way to have power to heat our house in the middle of winter when there's no more power? That's what I thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we got another one.
Probably answer that for, when they install solar system, they will install batteries in your basement to store that solar during the daytime so that you can use it during the nighttime to run your, uh, your fans and your pumps and that sort of stuff that keeps your house running in the summertime and the winter. Yes, there'd be battery backup. There'd be battery backup in your solar, yeah, solar system. When they install it on your house, there'll, there'll be batteries that'll install it in your basement.
I heard that, too.
Okay.
But they say they don't last that long either.
Anybody else?
All right. I make a motion that we close public comment.
I'll discuss the resolutions that will come to the board tomorrow night. And we will talk about these individually. After hearing what some of the people have said here, actually, there was a very good idea that came up that, uh, I think we'll have a little discussion here to talk about it and perhaps put something, make a modification to our proposal for the resolution. Uh, you need one?
Yes.
We've been requested to take a five-minute break.
Thank you. I'll set the timer.
I knew that's how it was.
Okay.
All right.
Suggestions about the removal of the.
Well, you know, I was looking at this and I was thinking. I'd like to keep that one.
That's the larger one.
Yeah. So we are looking at.
I get that.
Yeah, okay.
It says.
It's not on at all.
Hello. I think one of the ideas that I like, too, about that larger plant parcel, the largest, um, most south parcel, is keeping the residential part along Indian Bay out of the overlay. So somebody suggested, because there's already residential areas along Indian Bay that have got the, no, it's on the east side of Indian Bay.
So are we talking about the, what are we talking about?
It's, it's essentially a but.
Talking about those, pardon my shaking, those three locker properties there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just protecting those, right?
Yeah, well, what, what's marked res, I can talk without this, so. What's marked residential, um, on our zoning right now that's along Indian Bay? That's making sure that stays out of the overlay.
Because of the wells, is that the reason?
No, because it's already marked residential. Why should you take, you know, that residential section that's, that really hasn't been impacted by the industrial plant part of Dupont? Why should we include that in it? Because it's residential and people are already living along there.
I don't think that that's one of the properties that's under consideration. Um, and this does not have the, the parcel numbers on it.
It does not.
But I believe, oh, we've gotten it, well, I can shake just as well as an expert. This right here is a different parcel. This right here is the parcel that is considered sixty-one oh one, one thirty-six, one hundred, zero, 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 one, zero, zero. That is this right here. That whole square. Okay, okay. It goes down here.
Yep.
What is it?
That locker spot you're talking about is this, this whole square.
Oh. I didn't think that it went beyond Wilkes Row.
This one is individual, and gee whiz. That one is an individual lot, and then this is the third.
So, okay, so Don, is there any way that we could designate so that we, I would like to protect the residents there somewhat? That, that they can't put solar, solar or wind or anything? Is there any way that we can designate it somewhat that that part isn't included? You know, like make that residential or some other transitional space a different color that says that's not part of the overlay?
Well, we could extend the residential, the full length of this, and just have the overlay be from that line over.
That's what I was thinking.
Is that what you have?
Yeah. Okay, so we're talking about, I'm going to throw out a name. Um, Mr. Walcott lived in one of those parcels and the old grover property was one of those. But I'm talking years and years and years ago.
Yeah, I think, if, I personally, I just like that idea to extend that to, that also helps some people in Indian Bay across the road. You know, if we could just designate that and make the overlay, I, I, but do we have to call parcels? Or can we take a part, part of the parcel and designate it? That's, I don't know, Patty, I'm new here.
Well, I don't know either. Um, we could ask the zoning administrator. Okay. But let's have Don ask him because, um, he's the chair.
Bill? Bill Schmiede?
Right now, the residential district splits that parcel anyway. It basically recognizes the homeowners' ability to buy lots along Indian Bay and then, um, just a narrow strip there anyway. So it's, it's already splitting the parcels. And so if you want to go to the back of those property lines and to make sure you protected those three people who are there and then, you know, selling additional lots along there consistent with what's, you know, one's just a recent sale, that, the one that I think the Leavers are, are building on right now. Yeah, I would, I don't know why you couldn't do that. This is just an area that you're designating for renewable energy.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, it splits the parcel now, the way, the way it's drawn on the website right now.
So the answer is yes. But it's still all one parcel, so that means that there would have to be land divisions?
No.
No?
No, it's, it's just a matter, it's what they've done is they've taken, when we, whenever we did the, uh, zoning district map, they recognized that, uh, they would be able to have residential homes along Indian Bay, both on the east side and the west side. And they did a residential yellow zone on both sides of the road.
All right.
And then they got into manufacturing as you got a little bit further, you know, east of the road.
They would still have to maintain according to our ordinance of a hundred and fifty feet on the road and a minimum of one acre?
For any lot that is sold on the course.
Yes, okay, I like that.
Hundred and fifty and then, um, a four-to-one ratio and minimum one acre.
All right.
So Patty, for my clarification, can you point that out on the math about what you're talking about?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, it looks like this right here is going to go all the way up, and that right there is going to be some residential.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying, but I wanted to.
And this right here from this land here, and this, that right there is the Chrysler Rock Church. So are the twas still here? They're not. That's the twa property right there.
Right, that's not in the overlay district.
That is not.
No.
No, so it would be this, and, well, we could even, if that ever got cleaned up, we could put things there because it's clear cut.
It's, it's considered, uh, manufacturing or industrial right now because they're still pulling lime out of there.
Yes.
That's why it's a different color.
So this right here would all be residential, and this would all be the, and this is the forest. So this would be the overlay. Yeah?
Yep.
So that's, just this, 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 but not along Indian Bay.
So the, so what you're talking about is almost the entirety of the third parcel, but neither of the top two parcels?
Well, that's what, Connie, is she still here?
No.
But that's what we're discussing right now, right?
That's one of the things that she brought up is a great idea, is taking those two top ones out of the overlay.
Right.
Because that's mostly forest.
And that, I, I agree with that. It is mostly forested from walking. Yeah, no walk, yeah.
So this, that's remaining overlay there.
Is this property that, um, has previous owners, what if the owners don't agree to any of this? And the state takes it away from them, say this is what we're going to do?
No, there's nobody owns any property.
Nobody owns any property there.
We're not having public comment now, sorry.
We're trying to. Yeah, okay.
So, so my, um, I, I appreciate that idea of trying to save the forested upper two parcels.
This right here is where the old plant was.
Right, and so that large, that larger third parcel is approximately six hundred acres.
That's correct.
That's correct, and there are going to be places, and I can't tally the total acreage right now, but taking out that side piece that you're talking about and accounting.
Along Indian Bay?
Along Indian Bay. And accounting for the landfills and areas concerned that are on that property. I don't know whether you would end up with, number one, I don't know whether you would end up with five hundred acres of, of property. And number two is that land isn't available right now. And we don't know when it'll be available.
I, I don't think, I think right now we're just design, we're just trying to designate it, right? Is that true? We're designated this as a potential solar.
Right, I, I understand that, but if you're offering, if you're offering something that cannot be used, my worry is that we are walking into a lawsuit.
Why are you saying we can't use it?
Why am I saying that we can't use it? Because I too have been on the, I am on the Comores Environmental League Pack Committee. I've been studying this process for six years, talking with Safia, talking with Eagle. And there's no word that we've ever gotten about when or how the cleanup is going to be done, when that property is going to be freed. There's been all kinds of people who have approached, all kinds of developers that have approached that property and have wanted to use it. But it, the cleanup, the bureaucratic wheels of the state need to continue turning.
So.
And that, they may be done turning tomorrow, they may be done turning ten years from now. We have no idea.
We may, we may not be able to, we, in a, a Comores, be able to use that entire area. And now, but they could use some of it now. And later on, as they clean it up, they can expand it if they want to.
And it's going to be, the bottom line on this P two thirty-three, it's still the state's decision whether the state's going to let them put it in there. It's the state's decision on P two thirty-three, that if the state says they can do it.
Right.
Right, am I, am I understanding that right? PA two thirty-three says the state gets, sorry. So the state might just say.
Seventy-six on the road.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Does that, does that make sense to you, what I said?
No.
What, what, what did I make clear for you?
No, I'm responding to what Karen said, what she said that makes sense to me.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I couldn't pay attention to the conversation at the moment, so I have no idea what was happening in this conversation.
All right, let's start over again.
Okay.
What I was saying, and then Karen can take over after that. What I was saying in the, the top half of thirty-six, is that what that is?
Yes, right here.
The top half of thirty-six.
Yep.
Is already cleared, in the front portion of it, there's a couple hundred acres there.
Some stations, right?
Yeah, there's about two hundred acres right where that green dot was, that's cleared.
If Comores wanted to put, uh, solar there, they could put it there and as time goes on and they clean up the back end, then they could add on.
That's true, but what I'm trying to say is that it's not about what Comores wants. It's about where the process is with the state and Michigan cleanup to allow anything to happen.
I'm assuming that Comores is going to clean that up to set the state's satisfactorily.
Well, and there's different levels that they can clean it to. They can clean it to an industrial standard or residential standard. But when that cleanup and those standards are met, there's no way of knowing when that would happen. And so again, what I'm saying.
Why is that our concern?
Because it feels like we're offering property that's not usable, like we, and so, right, or in the foreseeable future. And I just worry about that in terms of a lawsuit.
It seems to me, as far as lawsuits go, you know, I can make an argument from six different angles that we could be walking into a lawsuit. I don't care whether it's the farmers, I don't care whether it's the Dupont, I don't care whether it's property owners. I hear what you're saying, but. The way I see this, you know, we don't have a lot of good options as far as I'm concerned. The state is going to have their law come into effect in November.
I realize that.
And if we don't, if we're not in compliance, then anybody who wants to can say, hey, this township isn't in compliance, we want to skip over the township regulations, and we want to just deal with the state.
Yeah, I agree with you, Steve, and I think that that's...
So, all I'm saying... Part of what this does, regardless of whether it gets cleaned up right away or not, is it puts us in compliance. And that's, that's what I see. I see that it puts us in compliance. I see, I heard a lot of people over a couple of years saying they don't want solar on the farm fields. And I think with some tweaking of this, eliminating the two very wooded parcels, and making sure that that residential corridor stays right there, that we start doing some things. I don't like, I don't like any of the options to be 100% honest with you, but this is, I think, the best we can do.
So that I...
And be in compliance.
So, I have a question about compliance. My understanding was that the three ordinances that are not about an overlay district, that those are the three ordinances that put us into compliance.
Yeah, all four of them. All four of them, yeah.
We have to have an overlay district to be in compliance?
As far as I understand, yeah, fully understand.
Well, and that's another problem. We haven't had a whole lot of discussion time to be able to fully understand it. So, can I turn to the lawyer and ask him that question?
Absolutely.
So, do we need all four ordinances to be in compliance?
Well, not necessarily.
That's what I thought.
So, for example, you could designate the entire township as available for all of these.
Right.
That would be easy.
Well, so let me, so let me ask my question more specifically. My question is that for the solar, the amendments to our current renewable energy ordinance, which are the solar, wind, and battery storage ordinances, my understanding is that those do make us compliant with the state law.
Correct.
And that this overlay district is, um... Is an attempt to be able to control the siting and the size of any potential renewable energy system that might come to our district.
Well, I don't know, I don't know about that. I wouldn't characterize it that way. It's like how you classify or zone any other land use. For example, you put residential in a residential area, you put commercial in a commercial area. This is just another land use where you say, okay, we think, and this is up to the planning commission and the board, we think it ought to be located here.
Okay, I understand that, but do we need the overlay district to be in compliance?
No, but you'd have to otherwise describe where you put it. So, for example, if you said, and a lot of communities do, we'll allow this in our ag district, you could simply say that. If you want to allow it in your industrial district, like, for instance, battery storage, you would say it's permitted in our industrial district, right? The location is always key to land uses. That's how you categorize those. It just so happens that the overlay is sort of a combination of districts here, some being the industrial, but others including other land uses as well, including battery storage, solar, and wind energy, all into one renewable energy overlay district that you might consider palatable. If not, then you'll have to rethink that, because those ordinances are drafted with that in mind. They go hand in hand.
Are there other communities taking this approach?
Yes.
What do you feel the success rate will be?
I'm not going to talk about it.
Okay, so, I propose that we remove those top two, which are the wholly wooded areas, and stick to this, keeping the residential corridor out of the mix.
That's 412 and a half feet of the westerly border, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
The depth of those properties are 412, I guess.
412 by 176.
412 and a half.
Okay, we have a motion to remove those...
We're going to remove those two from the overlay district.
We have a motion to remove parcel 6101, 125, 300, 001, 00, which is the top one, and also parcel number 6101, 125, 300, 0002, 00, which is the second one.
Yeah.
Those are taken out of the overlay, and then the, uh... The Indian Bay corridor, if you would.
Yeah, so... Omit?
Yeah, 412 feet, the length of Indian Bay's road.
Right. 412 feet deep.
Deep, yes.
Which aligns with other existing properties?
Yes.
So, then I will...
Oh, I'm sorry, one more. Then, that will remain as 6101, 136, 100, 0001, 00, which is the largest square of the public.
Right.
And that will remain as the overlay.
I did. That's this right here. Um, and what did I do with it?
A little bit of note?
Yeah. Yes. That's yours. Okay. So, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 68-2024, a resolution to recommend zoning ordinance and zoning map amendments regarding renewable energy overlay district with the corrections and amendments. I second.
Julie, has that motion been seconded? Would you run a roll call, please?
Steve Niscota?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Marissa McGlue?
No.
Karen McLean?
Yes.
Don Klein?
Yes. It has been passed, 4:1, four in favor, one against.
Yes. All right. Excellent.
That one is completed. Moving on.
Now, we're going to talk about... I'm sorry, I'm taking over.
No, 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 no. Somebody make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to discuss and vote upon Resolution Number 67, 2024.
69.
69, I'm sorry, 2024, regarding Ordinance Number 61-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to discuss solar energy systems. Looking at the ordinances, are there anything in there that causes you concerns that you might want to change?
Well, of course, there's things that I don't like. I don't like the 50 feet measured from the nearest edge of the public road right of way. I don't like it, because I like 600 feet, but this is a state mandate, and there's nothing I can do about it. I don't like that they can be 25 feet above the ground when they're in full tilt. However, that's a state mandate, and I have nothing to say about it. So, and the 55 hourly decibels, it's going to be quite a ways away from homes and the public. I say that's acceptable, but again, it's a state thing, and I have nothing to say about it. So, there, I've said my piece.
Steve?
I don't have anything else to say.
I'm, I'm going to say, I'd like to say that I like that you put in there that if it goes into effect, the PA-233, this is, becomes an effect. If not, we stay with the other. So, I like that. I think that was good.
Yeah. So, that's all my understanding, too. I've got nothing to add to that.
Good.
Shocking, I know, but still.
So, I'm going to make a motion now to vote on Resolution 69, 2024, that would move Ordinance 61, 2024 to the board for approval.
Second.
Julie, if you would, please.
Uh, Steve Niscota?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Marissa McGlue?
Yes.
Karen McLean?
Yes.
Don Klein?
Yes. It has been seconded and voted on unanimously to accept 69-2024.
And moving on.
Moving on.
I'll make a motion to discuss and consider Resolution Number 70-2024, a resolution to recommend zoning ordinance amendments regarding wind energy systems.
Second.
Thank you.
Karen, we'll start on this end.
Okay. Okay. What I have to say is, I understand that we have to pass this because of PA-233, but I would prefer to not win because of the, at night, the blinking lights. It's not, I'm not in favor of the blinking lights that come with the wind solar things. So, but I understand that I have to be in compliance, we have to pass this.
Listen. I agree, I understand it.
Okay. Patty?
I have no comment.
Steve?
Let's move on.
I'll make a motion to vote on Resolution Number 70-2024, a resolution to recommend zoning ordinance amendments regarding wind energy systems, and that is with ordinance to our current zoning. It would be ordinance Number 62-2024.
Second.
Julie?
Roll call. Steve Niscota?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Marissa McGlue?
Yes.
Karen McLean?
Yes.
Don Klein?
Yes. Been moved and seconded and passed unanimously for 70-2024 wind energy systems to be passed on to our board.
I'm going to make another motion.
You've got one left.
Because, you know, why not?
Yeah, I'm going to roll, Patty, go for it.
I would like to consider and discuss Resolution Number 71-2024, a resolution to recommend zoning ordinance amendments regarding battery storage systems. That is in conjunction with Ordinance Number 63-2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Steve?
Not aware.
Patty?
I really like that it's going to be close to a substation if it is going to be approved, because I think high tension wires going across our township are going to be noisy and unsightly, and it's going to really interrupt the Aurora Borealis view, and I don't want that. So, I'm in full support of this. So, I will make another motion to vote on Resolution Number 71-2024, the resolution to recommend zoning ordinance amendments regarding battery storage, and that is Ordinance Number 63, 2024.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Steve Niscota?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Marissa McGlue?
Yes.
Karen McLean?
Yes.
Don Klein?
Yes. Been moved and seconded and voted on 6, excuse me, 5, 0, in favor of the energy storage systems.
It's time for public comment.
One last time. Make a motion for the, any final comments from anybody that stuck around for all of this?
I want to say thank you to you guys. I know you guys have been on all sides, and I just thank you for persevering and putting in a good statement. It was all good, thank you.
And I also want to say that I, when I was thinking of the overlays, I really didn't consider that for an overlay, and I think, I don't know who the woman was who was here, but she was so well spoken, and obviously knew what she was talking about, and she said it. It made, it makes great sense to have it kind of all together, but also use that second, the second parcel that has a lot of open land. You can see it on Google Earth. Like, if you go through Google Earth and look at beyond, there are two big sections of open land, and then also the open land around the thing, and I like the idea that we can prefer the first parcel to the north, um, to the open land. I want to say thank you for listening and adjusting, because it makes me feel like we don't have, didn't have a pretty good idea of how we were going to vote, and it makes me feel like the process worked, so thank you.
And I want to thank you for listening, for whatever you're talking. If you hear us, if you hear us, if you're listening, whatever you're talking, a lot of us, and then you're prepared.
And I want to say thank you for saving the woods across the country, part of my heart, and a big plus. I have a lot of woods to save. We're putting in the overlay, overlay.
Recognizing again that the woods belong to Chumores and not to our township, okay, I have a question. Um, that top parcel is currently zoned industrial? The parcels that we just, that you just took out? Okay, so, Chumores can continue to do whatever they want to as long as it fits an industrial.
It's their property.
Okay, their property. Just recognize it's their property, everybody. Um, second, you, was there a goal that you were going for in terms of number of acres that we would kind of get to so that the state would say, this is a really good idea to use this brown field?
We have done some analysis, see what we could come up with, and I'm not going to share that with you right now, because that can change, but, uh, I understand that we have, as a group, just with us, we're trying to compromise the best we can to get what I think the, or we think that the township wants. And if we can provide enough acreage that would be satisfactory to the state, I think we'd be in good shape.
Okay, so we're trying to thread that needle. Okay, so we're trying to thread that needle?
Trying to thread the needle, that's why I can't really tell you what that acreage is, because we don't really know for sure yet.
So the, the acreage that you've now put into zoning, uh, as, um, renewables is how much, would you say?
I'm sorry?
The, the acreage that you have just put into play as zoning for this...
That right there?
582.
582, thank you. Which is close to what the original ordinance was, which was 600, is that correct? 500, so it's more, good, good job.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just have a question about, how did the...
Bill, would you tell your name and your address, please?
I will, um, my name is Bill Bergerson, I live now at 6975 West Old Channel Trail, and, uh, I'm just curious as to how, um, the overlay and its original, before you just made these revisions, came about, because, um, at first I thought all this property, maybe it is all owned by Comores, but that confuses me from the standpoint of how can the property be residential along Indian Bay? So, this really isn't a parcel map, I guess, of what you're showing there for the overlay, it's kind of a combination of different, uh, different types of zoning, is that correct?
I guess I'm not following that.
Yeah, so, this right here, these guys?
Yeah.
That's residential, and, um, this corridor, um, is...
It's currently residential as well, people can build along that road all the way up if they can buy the property. But we're, we just want to take that portion, that 412 feet, and take it out of the overlay.
Okay.
And so that...
So, so it hasn't been built upon yet, it's actually owned by Comores?
Yes, yes, people would have to buy the lots from Comores to build it.
Okay, except for the three lots.
This down here is all Comores, this is all Comores, this is all Comores. And that's the, uh, golf course.
Yes, sir.
Question, Arvin Nelson, 6666, Paulston. Uh, when you were saying on the, the strip along Indian Bay, but when you look at the parcel, the class on all those are 301 and 302, now, how is, how are you going to re, how is the township going to reclassify that? You're going to have 301 slash 401 and 402?
How the assessor does that sort of thing.
They'll have to do that, because that's what...
The assessor has science for this.
Yeah, because that's what the county's got, it is 301 and 302. So that will, you'll have a designation, where when you look, if somebody looks at that piece of property, that whole parcel, they'll have two designations and a class.
Well, no, it would still be, it's still Comores.
But, but the class, what I'm saying, the class, it's industrial, right now it's industrial. How are you going to separate that section out of the industrial portion of it, that 412 feet?
It's actually zoned residential. It's zoned residential. About a quarter of that, um, westerly section is zoned residential, uh, beginning where those three parcels are, all the way up. So, it's already zoned, but not, not on the county, county's got a 301. The classification is just for tax purposes, but the zoning map is, it's zoned residential.
Okay.
See, that's probably a discrepancy between what we say it is and what the assessor says it is, because it's still DuPont's property, the Comores.
Right, that's why I was just asking.
Yeah, I'll ask the show, too, I'll check it out, it's a good point.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I want to thank everybody for showing up and sticking through this. Uh, please understand that we've done all we can to try to accommodate as much as we can to the satisfaction of the, the township itself, and trying to maintain what we have. So, again, thank you for your attendance, and again... Now, just so you understand, what we will do is, I have to take these resolutions to the Township Board tonight, tomorrow night here, present this to the board, they will review it and put it on their agenda for voting on it in September. Okay, so, tomorrow night's meeting will be just the presentation of it, and the results will be done.
And if a lot of people show up, we'll probably have the September meeting here too. All right, now I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.